Mr. Stark, would you lead us in, sir?
Happy to. Let us pray. Lord, we thankful for this day and the many blessings in our life. The opportunity to gather here today to discuss other matters before the County Commission. Lord, we ask for your wisdom, your guidance for this body as they seek to make decisions in the best interest of our citizens. Or we also ask that you keep our men and women in uniform safe, those that are serving abroad. And the men and women here are serving locally across our state, keeping us safe each and every day. We ask that you look out for their families and keep them safe and well as well. Or we're thankful for all of our employees in San Juan County and ask that you bless them, keep them safe in all their activities each and every day. And we ask for your blessings on this meeting, our state, our county, and our nation. Pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Mr. Neely, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge and allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it brings us to our regular meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there is one change tonight on new business agenda item number one. Dr. Pennergrass is not able to join us, but Mr. Ed Displas, the Executive Vice President for San Juan College is here tonight.
Perfect. Any other changes?
I know, sir. The rest of the agenda is presented as is.
All right, I'll stand for a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume it passed unanimously, brings us to our consent agenda. Item number one, consideration of regular meeting minutes for September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Item number two, consideration of fiscal year twenty-five budget adjustment, number three, resolution number twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-eight. Stand for a motion.
Motion to approve the two consent agenda items.
Having been moved and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume it passed unanimously. Brings us to new business, the new business agenda. Presentation item number one on the general obligation bond three funding for higher education. Mr. Dispass, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing San Juan College to present to you today about the state's general obligation bond election. You know, we do have an election coming up on November the fifth, and there's a couple of bond matters that are very important to the college. And I want to tell you just a little bit first about the college and next about the bond election. At San Juan College, we always start our board meetings and other important meetings with a land acknowledgement. If you don't mind, I will read that acknowledgement to you right now. San Juan College is located on the ancestral lands of the Denai people. The Hickorya Apache, Southern Ute, Ute Mountain Ute, Hopi, and ancestral Puebloan have also ties and stories rooted in these lands and waters. We work, learn, and live on these lands. Thank you very much. A little bit about San Juan College. Currently, we have just a little bit more than eighty-eight hundred credit students. We have another four thousand and thirty-two non-credit and corporate training students. We are a majority-minority-serving institution with thirty-four percent Native American students and twenty-one percent Hispanic students. The average age of our students is twenty-eight years old. We offer one hundred and forty certificate and degree programs. We are known to be first in the nation for awarding certificates to Native American graduates. And we are third in the nation for awarding associate's degrees to Native Americans. The college's mission is to educate and empower individuals to thrive in an ever-changing world. And our vision is to inspire success through world-class education and life-changing experiences. Back in two thousand and ten, fifteen years ago, President Obama challenged all colleges and universities to increase their number of graduates by five percent per year. When you look over the last fifteen years, two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-four, you can see that we have typically well exceeded that amount. Our annual percentage has been roughly seven point two percent per year. So we're very proud that we have put forth efforts to exceed the target we were told to achieve. We recently at the college were approved by our local voters for seven million dollars worth of local general obligation bonds. We closed the financing on that on May the fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. And in the last just about almost a year and a half, we have completed our bike park pump track, our Henderson Fine Arts Center theater rigging, the Connie Gottsch theaters, fire retardant curtains, and retractable bleachers for the Health and Human Performance Center. Currently in project, in process is our last project in that bond series. And that's the new physical plant building, which will take and relocate our physical plant building out of the middle of campus and put it more on the periphery of campus. So it's not quite in the mix of the main campus. College kind of grew around that building, and so we have to move it now. We are currently working with two thousand and twenty-two state general obligation bonds. We were granted three million dollars in funding for projects, including an IT infrastructure project wherein we are replacing cabling, fiber, aging equipment, all in the name of enhancing data quality, speed, and internet security for our students and our employees. We've been modernizing our networking rooms, heating, cooling, and power systems, and providing increased network reliability. We're also installing a network fiber loop by creating an infrastructure that ensures network backbone dependability and redundancy. Click. Thank you. In the two thousand and twenty-four election, general obligation bond three provides statewide bonds that benefit public colleges, universities, and specialty schools. If passed, San Juan County educational institutions will receive five point five million dollars in funding. One point two five million for the Agricultural Science Center at Farmington, one million dollars for Denai College, and three point two five million dollars for San Juan College. If passed, the state general obligation bonds will not raise property taxes in San Juan County. Click. Thank you. San Juan College project is to upgrade three plant boilers and install high-efficiency units to increase system capacity and reliability. We'll also be replacing heating and cooling controllers to ensure future serviceability as the current system is obsolete and replacement parts have become quite difficult to obtain. We need to update and modernize the boiler and the controllers, make sure that we have continued services and are able to expand services. When we put the Johnny Sunrise Suites, our student housing into place, we had just enough capacity to bring them online. But we're starting now to think about phase-two student housing. So we're kind of stopped out capacity-wise. We need to increase the capacity of the current system. When you support bond three, we're supporting San Juan College. That's important because individuals with an associate's degree earn about a hundred and forty-one dollars a week more than employees who have only a high school diploma. Some of our graduates earn far, far more than that. State general obligation bond two is for libraries. This money is crucial to our rural population as libraries promote information literacy and lifelong learning. They provide students and the community with educational resources and research material. San Juan College would receive one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars of that money if the bond passes to purchase databases, books, ebooks, journals, and other educational resources. And again, like bond three, should the bond pass, it will not raise property taxes in San Juan County. San Juan College is more than education, training, certificates, and associate's degree. We do a lot to support the community. We are a community college. We take that to heart. And here's a list that I'm not going to read as I'm getting out of breath already, but these are the activities that the college regularly offers to the community. We find something for everyone in the community that is supporting us through payment of their property taxes. And so this is just a pretty lengthy list of the things that we do to reach out and help people outside of the traditional education and training offerings people think of us for. Voter information, again, this election is on November fifth. Everybody in the county, I believe, knows exactly when these dates are and where the voting opportunities are. I thank the county for providing those services to the voters. I encourage you to vote. I can't tell you how to vote, but please vote. Please encourage your neighbors, your constituents, to also vote. This is what we have to express our support and our direction for our community. So if you have questions, we have a couple of different sites. You can take a look at the college website. And then you can take a look at investinbondthree.com.
I have just one question on that list that you have. What is the NC three signing?
Oh, that's a great question. NC three signing is where we have a signing ceremony, a signing event similar to when athletes, professional athletes sign on for their teams or college athletes sign on to their college's football team, basketball team, what have you. We have our trades and tech students, particularly in the automotive areas, auto body areas, sign on. They, we, we have a ceremony. They come through. They say, we choose San Juan College. We choose this program. We give them a cap. We give them a certificate. We have them sign, and we welcome them to Team San Juan College. It's a very important step that helps those students understand they're taking a step toward their future, and they're doing so aggressively, and we welcome that and celebrate that.
Well, I want to say thank you for this presentation. My first degree was at San Juan College, so, you know, had it not been for opportunity here and just the cost was so low. I think it was fifteen dollars a credit hour at that time. That's a long time ago.
Just years ago. Good golly, we went on. Just a few years. It was just a minute, I'm sure. Well, thank you for being one of our alumnus, and thank you for, I hope, spreading the good word about San Juan College.
Host of San Juan College dropout.
We have room in many of our classes for you. Please, I can have an advisor call you. We can get you signed up, and we can put you on a payment plan.
Sounds great. I would like, I'd like to see, so this slide, this particular slide, maybe this slide with like the dates of when these things are and, and more information where there's like a one place or one stop to, to look at it. Because this is a great slide of, of, of what's available. You know, maybe flush that out a little bit more with some dates. I don't know if that's.
I think I'll talk to our web services people and our public relations people and ask them to go ahead and do that. I could do that for you now, but I'd have to make up what I can't remember. And that, it goes into public record, and that would not be cool.
He just wants to know about the zombie.
Yeah.
And Steve is interested in the fit check. I think he.
We would screw up their age balance.
Great. We'll, we'll work on that for you, sir.
All right, any other questions, comments? We appreciate you coming out to take the time. I know that this is important for the college and, and some of the, the things that need to happen. So we appreciate you coming out.
Thank you. I like to think that it's important for everyone. The college, you know, I'll, I'll tell you this, the college doesn't need anything. We are a conduit for the people in this community. So we're trying to meet the needs of everyone in the community. Big job to do, but we are a conduit. We are, we are a reflection of what we want to improve in our community.
I would agree.
Thank you. I heard somebody say they think it's going to be a short meeting. I hope that works out for you all.
I don't know who jinxed us by saying that. Come on, guys. All right, thank you. That brings us to item number two, consideration of proclamation recognizing October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four as End Polio Now Day presented by Chairman Protam, Terry Fortner.
So I'll just go over the item summary of, of what I know. This is about Rotary International. In nineteen eighty-five, Rotary International launched Polio Plus, and in nineteen eighty-eight, it helped establish the global polio eradative eradication. Oh, my gosh. I don't think I can read eradication initiative. These initiatives reduce polio cases by ninety-nine point nine percent since nineteen eighty-eight. Rotary International has directly contributed over two point two billion and countless volunteer hours protecting nearly three billion children in a hundred and twenty-two countries. Rotary is raising additional fifty million with the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation committing a hundred million annually. These efforts provide organizational support, deploy medical staff, equip health workers with lab tools, and supply educational materials to parents. Additionally, Rotary has secured more than ten billion in contributions from donor nations to eradicate polio worldwide. As a result, a proclamation for consideration recognizing October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four as End Polio Day. And I just wanted to let everybody know, there's two countries left that it hasn't been eradicated in, but they have small numbers, but still it's a wild polio virus, and that's Pakistan and Afghanistan. And now with the rise of poor sanitation in Israel, there's six hundred and forty thousand kids that need to be immunized for polio. And so one point two million vaccines have been given to that country. And it's a real fine balance of how they go about this. Oftentimes, it's the women in the society that these vaccines are given to, to give to the children. That's usually the most trusted caretakers. And for here in the U.S., polio was eradicated in nineteen ninety-three. My mom was a survivor of polio. So this is kind of this personal story to me. The last case in the U.S. was in two thousand and two, and that was one adult that was unvaccinated in New York who was a traveler. And so this is something that Rotary International has one point two million members, and we have a chapter here in Farmington. And one of our local latter houses helping us raise money locally for this mission of ending polio now. And it's our member's Charlie Todd, and he has a beer named after his deceased wife. And so we're hoping, he's donating that money to our club to give to Polio International. So I'm going to read this proclamation. It says, whereas Rotary International in nineteen eighty-five launched Polio Plus, and in nineteen eighty-eight helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and the, and GAVI, the Vaccine Alliance to Immunize Children of the World Against Polio. Whereas polio cases have dropped by ninety-nine point nine percent in nineteen eighty-eight, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. Whereas to date, Rotary has contributed more than two point two billion in countless volunteer hours to protecting nearly three point three billion children in a hundred and twenty-two countries. Whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional fifty million per year, which would be leveraged for a maximum impact of an additional one hundred million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, lab equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. Whereas in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than ten billion to the effort. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of San Juan County, New Mexico, does hereby proclaim October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four as End Polio Now Day in San Juan County, and encourage all citizens to join the fight for a polio-free world. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the proclamation recognizing October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four as quote, End Polio Now Day, unquote.
I'll second. Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume it passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to item number three, which is consideration of application for variance from San Juan County Cannabis Regulation Ordinance Number One Twenty for Burning Barrels, Forty-Nine Road, twenty-eight, forty-five in Aztec, as presented by. You can start if you'd like, or. Should we all stand when she comes? As presented by Michelle Tribby-Till in our community development director. Welcome, Michelle. Always service first, always service first.
We're front-facing. My apologies.
And we don't, did you need a little bit of time? We don't want to put you on the spot. Okay.
No, no, I don't want to hold anything up more than I already have. Okay, so Burning Barrels submitted a variance petition as application to the Community Development Department on August eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, seeking a variance from Section Three A of Ordinance One Twenty, the minimum separation from the residence requirement, which is three hundred feet. Brian Johnson, owner of Burning Barrels, wishes to manufacture and produce cannabis on property. He has leased up Forty-Nine Road, twenty-eight, forty-five in Aztec, New Mexico. The purpose, or the proposed grow is within three hundred feet of two residences measuring a hundred and seventy-eight feet and two hundred and thirty-five feet from the proposed fence. Again, this is an outdoor grow. Application is, the applicant is seeking a variance to the last, to last life of the business at this location. A public hearing was held before hearing Officer Douglas A. Echols on September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. The requested variance was not opposed by the hearing, by the residents within three hundred feet of the proposed grow operation. No negative comments were received by the Community Development Department, and Burning Barrels is in good standing with San Juan County Cannabis permitting at, at its two other retail locations. Hearing Officer Echols submitted written findings and conclusions and recommends the variant, the request for variance be granted within three conditions. No retail sales at this location. Any improvements to the fence of the property must be done with the approval of San Juan County Building Department. The grow shall be conducted in accordance with the state statutes and regulations of the state of New Mexico and San Juan County, New Mexico.
Mr. Chairman, can I read my normal disclaimer?
Yes, please.
Thank you. That's the right word for it. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, every time the commission considers an application for variance from our cannabis regulation ordinance, I like to make the following statement. This statement is directed more to the public to explain the process the commission will go through in considering the variance. When the commission considers this item, they will be asking a few, if any, questions. The reason for this is that a hearing on this issue has already been conducted by a hearing officer. If the commission were to reconduct parts of the hearing tonight at this meeting, it could violate the due process rights of parties who have not had notice that a new hearing would be conducted. Instead, the commission will be relying on the evidence gathered by the hearing officer at the cannabis variance hearing to make their decision. They will also be able to consider comments that they have individually received from constituents. That's it. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions, comments from commission?
No. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance request.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, is that with the, in addition to the conditions that have been stated by?
In, in, yes. With the conditions.
By Hearing Officer Echols. Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion or comments, questions? Not hearing or seeing any, the motions, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume that it passes, it passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Brings us to item number four, which is consideration of resolution number twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-seven, establishing the calendar year two thousand and twenty-five holiday schedule for San Juan County, as presented by Mr. Devin Neely.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. As is tradition, the County Commission designates San Juan County's legal holiday schedule for the upcoming year. And today, we present for the commission's consideration, proposed holiday schedule for calendar year two thousand and twenty-five. Section twelve dash five dash two in MSA nineteen seventy-eight is amended, designates the public legal holidays in New Mexico. The proposed two thousand and twenty-five holiday schedule for San Juan County follows the statute with eleven holidays and the following exceptions. Good Friday will be observed on Friday, April the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Martin Luther King Junior Birthday will be observed on Friday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. And Indigenous Peoples' Day to be observed on Friday, December twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. And the twelfth holiday reflected on the calendar is New Year's Day of two thousand and twenty-six. And the twelfth holiday reflected on the calendar is New Year's Day of twenty twenty six. The proposed holiday calendar has been reviewed by department heads and elected officials and the Employee Point of View Committee and meets with their approval and staff requests approval of Resolution Twenty Four, Twenty Five, Twenty Seven, establishing calendar year twenty twenty five holiday schedule for San Juan County. Stand for any questions?
Mister Hollywood, are there any other holidays you wish to add?
Yeah, I'd like to add a number of other holidays, but we follow state statute around here.
Very well. Any other questions, comments?
I have a question. You know, November is Native American month and could Indigenous Day be observed on November twenty eighth and then Martin Luther on the December twenty sixth? But we do that?
Uh, I don't see any reason why not, Commissioner. We can make that change before we distribute the calendar.
Are you moving to, do we need to have a motion to amend or does?
I believe so. Yes.
I'll stand for a motion regarding any amendments to the to the calendar.
Okay, I'd like to move that we approve the.
I think we need to amend the calendar first.
To amend the the calendar year for the two twenty five schedule and make indigenous Indigenous Day be observed on November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. And then Martin Luther King Junior Birthday be observed observed on Friday, December twenty sixth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second it.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume the amendment passed unanimously. I'll stand for a motion regarding the calendar.
Mister Chairman, I'll move that we pass Resolution Twenty Four, Twenty Five, Twenty Seven, establishing the calendar with the amendment on there for year twenty twenty five.
I second.
Okay, having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume that it passed unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Good catch, Commissioner.
Yes.
Uh, that brings us to item number five. Uh, consideration of reauthorization of gross receipts tax state equalization funding as presented by the birthday boy Nick Perrell.
Twenty eight years old today, Commissioner.
Good afternoon. Is it true that that October first is is your birthday?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, it's my birthday and it's also Jimmy Carter's birthday. Turn around. I hope to make it there one day.
It's also Navajo New Year.
All right. I didn't know that.
Navajo New Year.
My birthday has been officially washed away by my children's birthday, which is tomorrow. So it's rarely celebrated.
We'll gladly celebrate you today.
Well, thank you very much. Well, good afternoon, Mister Chairman Commissioners. I know Chairman Beck said often jokes about a bridge update, but the reality is is we always have bridge projects going. Through our thirty year capital replacement plan, we've prioritized a number of bridge replacements. And the next two on the list are Bridge Thirty One Twenty One and Eighty One Eleven prioritized for twenty twenty five and in twenty twenty six replacement. We started working on these projects as a design project in twenty twenty three. Those designs came together as a final construction package last Tuesday. You may recall that earlier this summer, we were looking at the final allocations of the local American Rescue Act or Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funding. And you all elected at that time to commit what is now roughly three point three million dollars to the construction of these projects. I think you'll also recall that that money needs to be officially obligated by December thirty first of this year. I'm happy to say that we are on pace to do just that. As I provided in your staff summary, however, that three point three million dollars in ARPA funding does not cover the full estimated cost of construction for those two projects. That estimate is roughly six point three million dollars. So I shared this information with Mister Stark last week and thanks to him and Miss Martin, who quickly put their heads together and identified this potential source of construction funding being first receipt stacks state equalization funding, which is which is one time funding that that's made available to the county, could potentially cover that that shortfall in construction funding. So I'm here today on my birthday to ask you for three million dollars. For money that would fully fund the replacement of these two important pieces of infrastructure. As as you can see on the map, Bridge Eighty One Eleven was built in nineteen sixty seven, Bridge Thirty One Twenty One in nineteen seventy. So roughly the same vintage, see similar daily traffic of around two thousand vehicles a day. The notable number there is their geometry rating, which is five out of ten. It doesn't necessarily mean the bridge is unsafe. Both both are indeed safe structures. But they are functionally obsolete, if you will, that that we would not build a a bridge today with the geometry that that these bridges have. They lack pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, as is required by the Federal Highways Administration for for any new bridge that we build. And and they're also no longer particularly serviceable. The the guardrails would be damaged on one of those bridges. It's a sizable overhaul. One of the bridges has what I would consider to be a questionable retaining wall on downhill side. Again, not an immediate threat to public safety, but not something that we can service in the event it were to fail. So again, that's why we put these bridges where we did on that thirty year capital replacement plan that we developed, I think about five years ago now. With that, I would I would be happy to stand for any questions you might have. And again, would would ask you consider the the allocation of this funds to this this construction project.
Do you have any questions?
Mister Chair, I guess finance, everything's okay. We got the money for this. Okay.
Mister Perrell, I I know we often run into situations where we think that's what this is going to cost. Do we have a pretty good indication that this is truly the the range of what we're looking at?
Mister Chairman, that's the best information we have at this point in time. So these estimates were issued as final just last Tuesday. So they haven't been sitting on the shelf for any extended period of time. Obviously, there's there's an unknown in in any any public bid in terms of who might be interested. And and at what cost would they be interested in doing the work? But based on the information we have, it's there, these aren't. We we won't be replacing the bridges with conventional span bridges. These are these are culvert projects and and I and I don't mean that small cover of projects. I mean very large culvert projects. One of them, we actually happen to already own. That's something I I purchased last year with our our annual public works budget. Based on the design that we had in hand, we we purchased the the culvert for the bridge on County Route Three Thousand, Bridge Thirty One Twenty One. So that's a variable that's that's known, you know, in our in our estimate. And then, you know, there are earthwork projects. I think earthwork's pretty easily estimated in terms of what the cost will will be as opposed to an unknown of a specialty contractor that's going to build a pre-stressed concrete bridge. So I'm confident that these these estimates are conservative and and maybe high, in in my opinion. So I think this this is this money will get the project to completion.
Very well. Any other questions? I'll stand for a motion.
All right, Mister Chair, I will move that we grant the public works and the birthday, please. Reauthorization of the three million in grocery seat stacks state equalization funding to the Bridge Thirty One Twenty One and to the Bridge Eighty One Eleven replacement project on County Route Three Thousand and Thirty Five.
Okay.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion, questions? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And not hearing any, I presume that it passed unanimous unanimously. And again, happy birthday and may the the bidding process come in under budget. All right, that brings us to a report from our county manager.
Well, thank you, Mister Chair and Commissioners, and some more good news for the birthday boy. Yesterday, we received word from the New Mexico Department of Transportation that we are the recipients of the Kaylinda Grant, the How Beautiful Grant that came up as a point of discussion at the Forsyth Meeting last week. And so we had applied, gosh, about a month ago and maybe two months ago and and just received word that we're going to receive a hundred and thirty nine thousand in funding to help continue our efforts to beautify San Juan County. One of the requirements of the grants that we have to hire a beautification coordinator. And so we'll be looking to do that, but it will just help to facilitate all the other great efforts that we have today in helping make us shine, which is one of our strategic initiatives. So I just wanted to make sure you all were were aware of that.
Thank you. Nick, you should have more than one birthday a year. You gotta work on that.
Another bit of good news, I know Miss Martin was part of this and Mister Sevedra, we received word from Moody's that the county's revenue bonds that we have outstanding were upgraded from a single A or or to A one from double A three for the twenty fifteen B series and and A two up to double A three. So that's the result of, you know, our post pandemic kind of economic base improving. We've also seen significant residential and commercial growth here in the county, which is very positive. And then, you know, as a result of all that, we have more pledge revenues to to cover the outstanding debt. So this is really good news. If we were looking to issue new debt, as you know, as part of our thirty year capital plan, we're we're looking to consistently pay that down and have it fully paid off by twenty thirty seven and be one hundred percent debt free is one of our strategies. But if for some reason we had to issue debt in the future, better bond ratings mean better interest rates. And so it's nice to have this endorsement from Moody's regarding our financial status and and the status of those of those bonds. And lastly, you all should have in front of you, we received on September twenty third a letter from from current State Senator Steve Neville, who had already announced he wasn't going to run for office again. And so his term would have ended December thirty first of this year. But he has decided that he would take to retire early. And so he submitted a resignation effective actually yesterday, September thirtieth. So just wanted to make sure you all were aware of that. And and then we maybe in the future could talk about ways by which to proceed with that matter. So any questions that you have, or I could say a few questions that you might have?
Any questions? It's my understanding that there's no deadline for us to fill that.
Mister Chairman, that's correct.
And that seat is up for election at at the general election. So I don't see any need to to rush to that. Let the the voters decide and they they would take, when when would they take? Was it January one?
Yes, they would take off the 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 new senator elected would be to take off January.
So I think maybe we can revisit it after the general election to see if there's a need to fill it before January one.
Sure.
We'd be happy to consider it at that.
Put that on the future agenda for you.
Okay, any other questions for Mister Stark, comments? All right, I'll open it up for elected officials for reports.
I have something. I wanted to give kudos to Mister Danzy for, and Michelle, I see her back there too. I got a really good compliment for your staff and it was Milton Livingston and Douglas Gay. And they helped a lot with what was with PMS, their event that was out there. And they didn't expect as many people as they had, and they were just on it the whole time. So they were very appreciative and I just wanted to let you know. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, reports?
I have a couple. Um, one of them is more kudos to Mister Perrell and the road paving at up on.
Sixty four eighty?
Sixty four eighty. Great job there. And I think Devin had part in this. I really appreciate the signage and the stuff that you put up on three fifty, letting people know that 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 road is going to be repaved and closed. It it saves my phone bill. It's not a big purchase for tax.
Charge for tax, per text?
Oh, I don't know.
Just down the coast.
Does it still charge? I just know it's too expensive.
And the other one is somebody else had a birthday this week and we didn't recognize that, and I think we should.
I agree.
Mister Stark had a birthday Saturday.
Oh.
This week.
I did.
Yep.
Certainly did.
Happy birthday.
No, I'm one year away from that.
Ooh.
Yes.
Next year.
I know. Might be a sad day. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I was I was waiting for you to start singing Nick Happy Birthday, so we did that.
Next meeting. Any other elected officials?
Mister Chair, this month, October first is Rajah and it's Navajo New Year. We don't celebrate New Year in January. But as Navajos, it's this month. It's like a time for reflection as the trees, the leaves are turning brown and red and and it's renewal time because it's the ending in the season. That's number one. Number two. Daily Times used to have a really wonderful journalist by the name of Alyssa Landry. And she was featured in the Navajo Times. She is the new provost at the Net College. And Alyssa Alyssa so stayed at my house. She was my guest when Shiprock Historical Society was obtaining articles and Alyssa with all her her expertise in writing, she she was researching for us at that time. So she always was great coming here and listening to the commission and writing up a a story on us in the in the Daily Times. So if you know her or remember her, send her a congratulatory letter, our card.
All right, I'll open it up. Oh, did did you have something?
Could I please?
Absolutely.
Chairman and members of the commission, I provided you all with our early voting schedules. You'll see that you have two. The first one indicates that we start voting in our office October eighth, so next Tuesday. And that goes through October eighteenth. And this is where it gets a little confusing because on October nineteenth, we open it up to all of our alternate sites. So the hours and locations are provided there for you. I just would like to make note, we are due to the presidential general election, we're increasing our early voting hours. So we used to be open, our alternate sites at eleven. All of them will be opening at nine Monday through Saturday. Still closing at seven, Monday through Friday and at six on Saturday. But we we have increased our hours for this election. I just wanted you to make note, in case you're asked or if you have any questions about it.
Thank you. Any other elected officials? I'll open it up to department heads for reports. Chief, welcome.
Mister Chairman, Council, good afternoon. I have some situational awareness that I wanted to pass on to the the council regarding some OSHA changes as it relates to fire brigade. This is some 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 issues that I've been tracking since February and it finally hit a trigger point where I felt it was necessary to pass along some information to the council. And unfortunately, it's it's it could have a profound effect on us. And I've got a prepared statement, so I don't stumble through things. But on October fifth of this year, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, OSHA, published a notice of proposed rulemaking to modernize the agency's fire brigade standards with a proposed new emergency response standard. The proposed changes to twenty nine Code of Federal Regulations nineteen ten one fifty six would shift OSHA heavily towards NFPA standards with twenty two NFPA standards being incorporated in whole or in part, and fourteen other standards contributing to the additional to to new requirements to varying degrees. In effect, these would become significant unfunded federal mandates that we would be obligated to meet. It's important to note in these twenty two NFPA standards, the term. the term shall is listed fifteen hundred times. If these are adopted as law, those shals would now be required and that's important to note. If adopted as written, uh, this will have a profound effect on the fire service in general. And I would forecast this would certainly, uh, create a chain reaction of, uh, of smaller volunteer fire departments with, uh, the funding that we don't have, uh, to close doors across the state. So as I, as I see this, this is not a, a good thing. Uh, just a reminder for the commission, New Mexico is a OSHA state, meaning we do have a state adopted plan. New Mexico, OSHA has adopted all Fed OSHA standards incorporated by reference that relate to state and local government and private sector employee operations. Therefore, the state and federal standards are identical. In addition, New Mexico OSHA has adopted the state and local government firefighting standards. It's hard to gauge right now what financial impact this would have on us, uh, here. Uh, but, uh, it is certainly concerning to me. Uh, but what is more concerning to me is, uh, what this may do to our volunteer members if they now have to meet the same standards as a fully paid firefighter. Uh, this could certainly spell trouble for us. Though some parts are scalable, uh, most requirements within these proposed standards uh, would be the same for, uh, a combination, uh, department for us as it would a, a large metro fire department. While many of the proposed provisions in the emergency response standard would be helpful and improve the safety of emergency responders, many of the new requirements would be very burdensome and in many cases impossible for combination fire departments like San Juan County Fire and Rescue to comply with. If the standard is adopted in its current form, many departments would be forced to shut their doors or operate outside the federal standard, leaving, leaving themselves open to fines, citations and huge, uh, civil liability exposure. So as I mentioned, we've been tracking this, uh, since February. Uh, public comment, uh, closed recently and that was really the trigger point, uh, to bring this to you. In that, there was not enough, uh, evidence to suggest that volunteer departments would be exempt from this. Of course, uh, as, uh, as you know, San Juan County Fire and Rescue is a combination fire department, meaning that we have both fully paid, uh, career staff and volunteers. And as it tracks right now, it would, uh, certainly looks like our volunteers would have to, uh, comply with this. The other layer of complexity is OSHA and the federal government has not yet defined what a volunteer is. In fact, all the research that I have, uh, gathered suggests that if, uh, volunteers are receiving, uh, a significant reimbursement, uh, such as a nominal fee, which we provide for our firefighters, our volunteers, and/or they receive a state pension, again, which our volunteers do, uh, receive, as small as it is, they do receive a pension, that they could be considered a employee. So even if, uh, even, even if, uh, at the end of the day, volunteers are exempt, there's still unclarity or still unclear whether they would be exempt. Uh, I will tell you, uh, the, uh, at the federal level, uh, the International Association of Firefighters, which is the federal, or excuse me, which is the, uh, uh, fire union is backing this. And of course, they've got a large voice at the federal level. Uh, so I'm certain that this will pass, uh, in some form or fashion. Uh, this goes to public hearings, uh, in November. Uh, the National Volunteer Fire Council, um, is an advocate, uh, and they're certainly, uh, voicing a lot of their concerns. So I don't know where this is gonna end up, uh, when the dust settles, but, uh, I'm certain that it will have an effect on us. To what extent, uh, I don't know. We're tracking it carefully. I have had conversations with the New Mexico State Fire Marshal and, uh, I actually hoped, uh, that we had, uh, we would have a meeting this week with, uh, New Mexico OSHA. Uh, but, uh, it sounds like, uh, we're still working out some times there. So again, I didn't come here tonight to, to, uh, ring any bells, uh, so to speak, but I do want to make sure the, uh, commission is not blindsided by this. And, uh, you have some situational awareness as to what, uh, may be coming down the pipe. Again, uh, we'll continue to monitor this closely and, uh, I'll provide updates to the commission as, uh, needed. And, uh, I stand for any questions that the commission may have for me.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, I did wanna bring up County Road Three Fifty again, uh, though Mr. Vanier had already brought it up. Um, work is going well. We hope to be out of that intersection, uh, by Thursday of this week, though that may spill over into Monday. Uh, if, if so, we'll, we'll keep the signs in place. And I did want to, I, though I appreciate the, the recognition for the work that we did on Road Sixty-four Eighty, that really does reflect, uh, on the staff that I have. Um, paving a road when it's ninety-seven degrees i- in the middle of summer, it is an incredibly difficult job, um, and, and they do it willingly, uh, with, with generally a positive attitude. And, and it was a, a full team approach. We were stealing folks from, from every division in public works to support that project. Um, so again, thank you for the recognition, but that, that really goes to them. And, and frankly, to you all for the program you've allowed me to build in public works. We're able to do a mill and overlay of, of one mile of road for about two hundred thousand dollars. That would be the envy of any municipality in the country. And that's reflective of the staff that, that I'm afforded and the equipment that you allow me to buy year, year. So again, some of that recognition goes to you all, so, so thank you.
Any other department heads?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Charlotte Stanley. I'm the director for the Housing Authority and I just wanted to come and give you a quick update with housing. Um, we are currently assisting two hundred and sixty voucher holders with nine hundred and ten applicants on the waiting list. Unfortunately, our waiting list is about a year and a half right now and that's just due to our funding. Whenever we do have people come in and ask, you know, where do we go, what do we do? We always send them to mental wellness center or we give them a list of low-income apartments that they can, that they can call and, and see if they have anything available for assistance.
So three hu- you said how many were on vouchers?
Two hundred and sixty.
Two sixty and nine hundred and some on the waitlist?
Nine hundred and ten on the waitlist right now.
Yeah, yes. I just want to give you kudos too because I'm in that building a lot over there and working it. Amazing. How many people you punch through there is, it's crazy.
Thank you.
I know, I appreciate it. I'm sure everybody up here appreciates all the hard work that you guys do with the limited housing that we have available in San Juan County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Feel like you're a school teacher again? Commissioner Ford?
I just had one more thing and this was, uh, from Director Toby Velazquez, State Parks Division. And I've been talking back and forth with him and I'd brought up in the past about, uh, life jackets. And he wrote me back last week and he named off fourteen, uh, lakes in our state and, uh, about the projects that they have going on as far as, um, being able to get a loner for these, uh, life jackets. And he said that they are planning for the purchase and placement of additional loner kiosk stations and six hundred loner life jackets of various sizes. And, uh, the kiosk station costs about three thousand, uh, for materials, construction and delivery. And the life jackets are about ten K total. Says we are also converting and installing these kiosk stations with bilingual messaging. And, um, the planning will further expand and support our boating and life jacket wear program with an approximate investment of seventy-five thousand. So, so I, I think that was good movement on trying to get life jackets. And we know that he has to look at all fourteen lakes, but he's, uh, keeping an eye on Navajo. So I, I appreciate him. Just wanted to give him recognition.
Last call? All right, that brings us to comments input from the general public. Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes and to subjects the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. Are there any comments from the general public? Not seeing any, uh, and having exhausted the agenda, I'll declare the meeting adjourned.